Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 14, 2022. Can I have a motion going to executive session to discuss tenure and matters specific to the employment history of particular individuals and contract negotiations?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 14, 2022. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially for the brother of Steve Viteri?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
We had a long meeting before. We're going to start with our first public comment, which is on the gender-related items only, and Judith Stevens.
Hi. Good evening. First of all, thank you for the public comment section. We always appreciate that, and thank you for all your work, as always. Appreciate that as well. I am here for this session to talk about the Regulation 1420-R. I want to thank you for tightening it up and clarifying it. It's good to see specific timelines attached to the steps for reviewing the challenged books. Given how long the current review has taken so far and that we don't have any resolution yet, I think it's very important to impose deadlines on the process going forward. What I don't see that I would like to see is a conduit for information to the school families and to our community. I appreciate that there's a page on the district website for the Book Review Committee, but it's sparse, to say the least, and hasn't been updated in quite some time. There's no timeline listed, no steps taken, no list of members of the committee, or even an expected date for the conclusion of the review. This gives the appearance of the entire process going into a black hole. I know that's not the case, but from the outside looking in, it's hard to tell. Sunshine is the best disinfectant. Please keep all of us updated on the process itself and not just on the outcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. So I have a few items to update the board and our community on prior to our last installment of our presentation on budget, which will be delivered by several members of our central administration team. That presentation will be on instruction, general education, pupil personnel services, and technology. So prior to that, I just want to give a quick word of recognition and acknowledgement, a quick shout-out to the students who participated in this weekend's production of Fiddler on the Roof. For those who attended, and I saw many families attended all three performances, it was absolutely dynamite. If you haven't had the opportunity to see Fiddler yet, sorry. It was terrific. And what I would tell you is there is a DVD that will be available for sale. Part of the copyright restrictions that we have did not allow us to livestream the performances, but our students were nothing short of spectacular. And kudos to Mrs. Stock in preparing the students to the pit that was performing right there. I can see it now. That was a high-quality presentation. I've been attending these things over the last 20 years, and I don't think I've ever seen a high school production that good. So that is dynamite, and I'm just so proud of our students. It's a long show. It's about three hours or so, so part of the consideration in not canceling Saturday night's performance is that our graduating seniors have not been onstage for a spring performance since their freshman year, so the show must go on. Fortunately, we had an O&amp;M staff who were very willing to come in and make sure that the grounds were safe and cleared of the snow, and I'm so grateful to our -- and I'll come back to our O&amp;M staff in a moment. But scheduling two, three-hour performances in the same day is probably not ideal for our students. It's not ideal for our families. So the show went on. It was a great show. I'm so proud of our students. I'm proud of Mrs. Stock. And as I wrote in my letter to the students, I wrote a letter today to each student in the production, "The future of our performing arts program is very bright here in Yorktown." So congratulations to all of the members of Fiddler on the Roof, whether you were onstage, back in the tech crew, in the pit, or in the wings assisting in the production. Everyone did extraordinary. With just a few other updates from the weekend, you know the weather wasn't so cooperative on Saturday. It was a rough-weather day. I just want to shout out our operations and maintenance staff. Our facilities department was extraordinary. We had the SAT here. I believe just about every school district in the region canceled tests that day. Yorktown did not. We were able to keep the tests on, not disrupt the schedule. We had about 200 children come here to take a test, and for those children who were registered, it was very important to them that they take the test at the scheduled time so that they could have the results in time before the deadline closes to register for the next test. So it was important for the students who registered, and I'm glad we were able to make that happen, and we were only able to make that happen because of an outstanding operations and maintenance department. They were here clearing snow so that the children taking the SAT and their parents can leave safely, and then they were here preparing the campus for the arrival of hundreds of people for the performance of Fiddler on the Roof. And they were back here on Sunday for Fiddler on the Roof and for state playoff basketball games. They parked thousands of cars this weekend. Now, those costs, I do want to reiterate, are covered by the section, so they were reimbursed for anything related to the basketball hosting, and I'll come back to that. Those are all covered costs. With regard to our O&amp;M staff, thank you, thank you, thank you. I just, there are no words to thank them for how selfless they were. And then, moving forward, we also hosted state basketball games here, four of them. It was a terrific day for athletics. It was a terrific day for our community. Our gym was the centerpiece of it all throughout the entire process. We are no county center. We're not the county center. It's a different venue, and we recognize that. But Yorktown stepped up to make sure that children across the region had the opportunity to participate for a championship and participate in the sport that they love, and we're proud to have done that. And thanks to athletic director Rob Barrett for all of his work, all of the game supervisors who just gave of their Saturdays and Sundays to be here to support the effort, our O&amp;M staff again, Dennis Verbois for his leadership and his logistical planning, Jen Forsberg for coordinating with the Yorktown Police Department to make sure that the security presence was here and could be enforced. With regard to sports, spring sports start today. This is one of my favorite days of the school year when spring sports start. The excitement in the air, the energy in the air on this campus, where you have a softball team that's out practicing and a baseball team that's out, and a lacrosse team that's out, in both boys and girls, and the tennis team is up and running and golf gets going. It's just such an exciting time of the school year for us. So we see the netting going up around the fields and the tarps coming off the field, so it's quite exciting to be at this point, and it's hard to imagine that we are already at this point where we're beginning spring sports. Just a couple of other items transitioning away from now, spring sports and some of the wonderful things that our students are doing. I do want to share that our science Olympiad team at the middle school is going to the state championship, which is dynamite. We're so proud of our students at the middle school, second year in a row. They're in the state competition. In just a couple of short weeks, our robotics team will be competing, and I visited with them last week, and they have designed a robot that can collect a ball and then throw a ball a pretty far distance. So it is just phenomenal what our students have been able to design, their creativity and innovation coming out of the robotics team. We, I talked about our facility, and I talked about our gymnasium, and that is purely a function of the Capital Reserve Fund that the board had the foresight to create in 2017. And that is something that originally, the original term was a $12 million reserve fund over a 10-year period, and there were so many benefits to that approach, saving the costs on interest, saving costs on bond counsel, saving costs in so many other areas, and it allowed us the opportunity to really enhance our facilities. We've exhausted those monies that we can put in, the maximum amount that we can deposit into the account, and so the Fiscal Advisory Committee of the Board has been meeting to discuss alternatives and options and next steps moving forward now that we've reached the maximum amount that the fund can do for us, that we can invest in the fund. So, Mr. Maniani, shall I turn it over to you to speak briefly?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Hatter. So as Dr. Hatter mentioned and was presented at our last board meeting, five years ago, we approached the community with a proposition to establish a Capital Reserve Fund. At the time, it was to run for no more than 10 years and be funded with no more than $12 million. We were fortunate enough to be able to fully fund the reserve within the first couple of years, and as mentioned, we've actually spent all of that money on various upgrades to our facilities and had done so very successfully. We were able to accomplish a lot of projects for that amount of money, and it deferred or saved us a ton of money on bonding everything. In light of that, the Fiscal Advisory Committee met and reviewed what our options are going forward, and what we'd like to propose to the board tonight is to reconstitute that, essentially extend that reserve another 10 years and give the board the ability to populate it with up to another $12 million. We have a list of projects that, you know, could be done and should be done, and this would provide us with a very effective way to accomplish that. It also will help us as we move forward with our bond maturation schedule that we have. We have bonds that are coming off of our schedule in the next several years, so that may allow us money to populate the fund with again. Last time, we were able to use roughly $3 million a year over a four-year period, and we got a lot accomplished for that. So simply laying it out to the board, if we want to put a proposition on the ballot in May, we need to decide that soon, and we would like to recommend that we look at, again, just extending the current period for another 10 years and giving the board the ability to fund up to $12 million over that timeframe. Just to reiterate, the board decides each year whether we have the ability to put any funds away, and all of the projects require voter approval to remove the money and do the projects. So it's a nice way to get feedback from the community on what they view as important. We put out a few ideas, they vote on them, and then we utilize whatever funds we have available for those projects. So none of this would really begin for another year because we have to get SED approval for all of the projects that we would be looking at, but in order to get approval, you have to have a method of funding, so it's a nice cycle. So what we're asking is for the funding mechanism so that we can then put some projects up for approval, and then, once that's done, we would be able to get the voter authorization to withdraw the funds and use them for those specific projects.
So I just want to reiterate, the reason for using the Capital Reserve is the money we take out, Tom, you can address this, is we don't pay any interest. It's a cash project, so it saves us. Can you say, how much interest have we saved on the $12 million worth of projects we've currently done?
So we're estimating at a very conservative interest rate of anywhere from 1.5% to 2%. If we had borrowed that $12 million, we would have paid over $1.5 million in interest expense over a 15-year period.
Okay. And then, as far as steering and the projects, we're working on compiling projects because, off the top of my head, I could probably come up with about $100 million worth of projects. There's always things that need to be done, to be upgraded. Ron has been speaking with all the different buildings and the principals to get their top priorities, and then it will go back to steering, and steering, Cheryl was on steering, but I think we will hash it out and come up with the projects that we feel are in a priority order to start to work on.
That's good. So thank you for that, and thank you, truth be told, to this board for the determinations and the decisions that you made, because some of the things we can see in terms of the investments that the board has made, but there are other things that you can't see. So, for example, the cooling tower at the middle school. The central air works. It gets hot out. It turns on. There was an expense that went into replacing the cooling tower at the middle school, so that is just a huge, huge asset to the building. It may not be as visible as a beautiful new gym that was also part of the Capital Reserve or the air conditioning systems that have been installed at the second floor of the high school, and anyone who has had a child go through the high school knows how warm the second floor of the high school can get. Also, the air conditioning in our large instructional spaces and our large building spaces, cafeterias and gymnasiums, because in our elementary schools, they don't have an auditorium like this. The cafeteria is their gathering space, and that's where they put multiple classes together, and many of the celebrations do happen either at the beginning of the year when we're first acclimating the children to the school building, or at the end of the year when we're celebrating their accomplishments, and at both bookends of the year, it's quite warm. So we certainly appreciate all the investments and the consideration and the time that this board's invested in preparing for the facility needs of our students and the facilities that our students deserve. So this look ahead is something that I really appreciate and look forward to. Just a couple of other updates before we move into the presentation for this evening. Just an update on the book review that's happening. I do want to share that there are currently nine books under review. The parent or the community members have been identified, and we have meetings scheduled at the end of this week. The first round of meetings are starting at the end of this week. So more information to come, but the meetings have been scheduled thus far, some meetings have been scheduled thus far. So we continue to move forward. Once a determination is or a recommendation is formed by members of the committee, they'll issue that recommendation to me, where I will make a determination. I will notify the individuals who initiated the complaint, certainly notify the board and update our website to reflect the outcome. So that's where we are in that process. With regard to the Cultural Awareness and Equity Task Force, as the board is aware, we met with about two dozen parents in the community, or residents of the community, I should say, and we had a digital survey that was open for quite some time. We had 72 responses to that digital survey, and today, our leadership team met to debrief what we heard. It was purely to identify just what we heard without adding our interpretation of what we heard or anything beyond just a very objective look at what we heard. I'd like to present that to the board in early April. I don't want to put a specific date on it. I will notify, obviously, the community prior to my determination of that date. I'd like for it to be as early as April 4th. However, I will confirm that with the board and certainly with our community once our team is prepared to issue that presentation. And it will be a presentation that we issue. We'll also post it to our website. And we heard, as of right now, our team has identified 14 unique points from the members of the community with whom we met and the digital surveys that we received, so we'll certainly articulate those points that we heard in the presentation that we deliver. And so we're aware the individuals who are sitting on that team, on that administrative team, it's Mr. Cole, Ms. O'Shea, myself, Mr. Rosen as the Director of PPS, Mrs. Horowitz as Principal of the Middle School, and Mrs. Amerling as Principal of one of our elementary schools, Brookside. So we have a secondary principal, an elementary principal, Director of PPS, Curriculum Superintendent and Business Office, because there are some things that may require additional considerations from expenditures that we may be proposing, so we want to tap Tom's voice as part of the process as well. That's the update that I have prepared to share with the board. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Rosen and Ms. Forsberg to the stage here with us, and I will turn it over to Mr. Cole, who will deliver the last installment of our Budget Presentation Series. Next week's meeting, I will be delivering my final presentation to the board for your consideration on budget. That takes all of the presentations that we heard and just incorporates them into one presentation. So at this time, Mr. Cole, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Hatter. This evening, we're going to have the presentation done in pieces. It is a very large presentation, but it is the most important part of the budget process. So we're going to begin this session with Mrs. O'Shea, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, who will deliver the first part of this budget.
So thank you, Dr. Hatter and Mr. Cole. So this is the Instruction and Technology Review Budget Session, and this is the sixth presentation in a seven-series budget process that we're going through. What you'll see during the following slides is that Mr. Rosen, Ms. Forsberg, myself, along with Mr. Cole, will really highlight some of the portions of the instruction budget going into the 2022-23 school year. So the instruction organization chart reflects nearly 500 employees in various different capacities. Two curriculum supervisors were added this year. We have, Ms. Chesser is our Supervisor of Humanities, and Mr. Miller is our Supervisor of STEM. Those were positions added to the curriculum line this year. You've seen this slide before. Am I on the -- nope. Go forward. Yep, thank you. So you've seen this district vision before. It is something that was created about five years ago with some work that Dr. Hatter started with our administrative team, and this district vision ensures we have a path with clear expectations when planning for our students, our curriculum, and our programs. Along with implementing comprehensive academic programs, we strive to build capacity, creativity, and critical thinking, and to provide opportunities for students to explore varied interests. To that end, all of the components of our educational program are important and valued as we consider the experiences our students will have through their K-12 journey in Yorktown. Our overarching goal is to provide enriching learning opportunities that support the whole child. Therefore, we continually focus on academic areas, social-emotional learning, performing arts, fine arts, athletics and physical education, character education in clubs, non-athletic teams, and organizations. The goal of the Curriculum Department is to ensure that meaningful instructional programs are in place, K-12. This includes careful curriculum design based on the New York State learning standards in each area, implementation of effective instructional strategies, and student assessment practices that help guide teaching and learning. Student programs and services are in place to serve all of our learners and to support the philosophy of whole-child education. Here's just a quick look of some of the BOCES and Lyric Services included within the budget for the 2022-23 school year. All of these services are currently being utilized during this year as well. Instructional staffing throughout the school district includes teachers, teaching assistants, related service providers, counselors, clerical positions, nurses, library media specialists, administrators, school resource officers, and safety monitors. As we continue our plan for the 2022-23 school year, there are certain areas of focus that we'd like to highlight. We will continue our commitment to assess and review our curriculum and instructional practices to ensure that all students are provided with an educational program that will help to prepare them for opportunities in the future. We will continue to ensure our curriculum is aligned with specific New York State content area standards and follow the requisite implementation timelines. We will provide curriculum resources to teachers as well as professional development in order to help further this work. We will continue to expand the implementation and the integration of ESTEAM. This will include the implementation of two new high school electives, which we've spoken about previously, data science and civil engineering. In addition, we will continue the planning for the implementation of the new K-12 computer science standards, which are required to be fully embedded K-12 by school districts by 2024. We are looking forward to continuing the work of the Cultural Awareness and Equity Committee, and these are just some areas that I wanted to highlight for you as a board as we move forward. I'm going to ask Mr. Rosen to speak to the PPS part of this presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Shea. IDA requires that school districts provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment to every student with a disability through the age of 21 or earlier if a high school diploma is awarded. The PPS Department is responsible for following the key provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. In addition, we have Child Find and Committee on Special Education responsibilities for students who attend local private and parochial schools within the boundaries of the Yorktown Central School District. This is the organizational chart for Pupil Services. I am proud to be the Director, and we are lucky to have Caroline Almeida as the Assistant Director and Kelly Rudick as our new Special Education Supervisor. The supervisor position was added as of July 1 due to the increased demands within the department. This chart reflects the number of special education students from the October snapshot date for each year. We use this October date for each year to show trends. Due to the increasing special education enrollment, we have also included current numbers as of March 1, 2022. As you can see, the number of pending cases as well. We currently have 32 CSE referrals pending, 23 504s, and we have the 33 CPSC. The Yorktown Central School District also recently welcomed 55 previously classified students into the district between January and November 2021, and students continually move in throughout the year. It is important to emphasize that a major focus in this budget is based on the increase in the number of students receiving services and the level of programs and services that are required to support students during their educational journey in the Yorktown Central School District. The district continues to meet the needs of our students through a comprehensive continuum of services that include related services, consultant teacher, resource room, integrated co-talk classes, and special classes. We also provide areas of life skills as well as a six-week extended school year program for eligible students. YCSD utilizes a variety of combination of special education programming, supports and services to serve students within the least restrictive environment. You can see those on this list. The budget includes the cost for tuitions for students who are recommended for out-of-district programs. This chart indicates the number of students who attend other public schools, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, Southern BOCES, private day schools, and residential placements. As previously noted in the chart, we have 43 students currently attending out-of-district programs. The PPS Department provides ongoing case management to the students who attend these programs, which includes monitoring the implementation of the recommended programs and related services. The PPS Department is responsible for arranging all mandated Committee on Special Education meetings, as well as arranging for reevaluations that are required every three years. During the current year, there was an increase of 1.0 special education teachers for the current school year. We are currently monitoring our maximum capacity for certain programs and will require additional personnel for next school year. The budget for the 22-23 school year includes additional teaching staff, clinical support, related service support in the areas of speech-language pathologists, clerical staff, and additional support of a second behavior analyst position. The additional behavior analyst is recommended to provide behavior intervention, staff training, completion of functional behavioral assessments, and behavior intervention plans at Mohansick and Crompon Elementary Schools. We continue to monitor staffing in the areas of occupational We continue to monitor staffing in the areas of occupational therapy and physical therapy, and based on the results of the recommendations for incoming kindergarten students and the results and reviews for the rest of the year, additional staffing may be required. Areas of focus moving forward for 22-23. We continue to review all CSE procedures to ensure compliance with state mandates. As part of the eligibility process for special education, the CSE reviews all RTI data, which can include building-level interventions in the areas of reading, math, speech, occupational therapy, and social-emotional supports. The PPS Department, in conjunction with the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, plan to closely review the process and implementation of services through the instructional support teams in each building. When planning for special education programs, we consider future needs over a multi-year period. For example, based on current trends in the area of social-emotional functioning of our students, we continue to explore programs and support services throughout the district. Due to the programs and services required for incoming kindergarten students, additional special class programs and support services are recommended, as well as working again with Southern Westchester BOSEs and Northern BOSEs. Probably the biggest area of focus is the last one, which is concerned in the area of space. We continue to meet with building administrators and staff to review new programs and services to determine not only staffing needs, but the space needs for the implementation. Thank you. And I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Forsberg for technology.
With a relatively small technology and data staff, we are able to manage a state-of-the-art technology infrastructure that provides access to an ever-growing number of digital tools for over 4,000 users and our families. This year, the data and technology departments merged. This was a smooth transition as the departments have worked closely together over the years, and the data team was added to our online help desk, ready to support our faculty, staff, and families. We also collaborate on numerous projects together. In the Technology Department, we plan to add an additional technician from Edgitech next year to support our ever-growing hardware and software needs in the district. The additional support will also help us with supporting the new phone system, new security camera system, as well as additional cybersecurity monitoring and day-to-day operations. There is very little that happens in our district that does not involve either the network and/or access to the Internet during school or after school. Updates this year include an upgraded district-wide phone system with brand-new phones, an updated security camera system with new cameras across the district, and additional interactive boards in classrooms that replaced smart boards. The video streaming for sports was updated to huddle live cameras indoor and now outdoor, and additional hardware was secured for classrooms, which include but is not limited to additional Chromebooks, larger monitors for our middle-school technology, and additional hardware to support specialized programs at Yorktown High School. Our bandwidth was recently expanded and now includes an additional 1 gigabyte second or redundant connection. Both First Light and LightPath are our vendors and have built-in DDoS monitoring to keep us going during the day. Our Vigilon camera system has proved to be very clear and useful with access via a mobile app, as well as anytime, anywhere online access to our security cameras when needed. This list of software on this slide and the next slide are a sample of the many software tools the Technology and Data Department supports and manages to keep the district safely connected. Many different types of technology outside of the instructional software tools are also supported by our team. Here is a small sample of over 150 apps, software, and extensions that are supported in the district. For the past two years, all software, extensions, and apps are vetted through an approval and review process. The review process ensures smooth communication, budget planning, and approving vendors against EDLAW II-D data privacy regulations. Some of the newer online tools were launched during the spring of 2020 when we were in a remote environment and proved to be an essential part of the regular instructional or administrative day-to-day operations. Our district experienced a cyber attack in October of 2020. The investigation revealed a malware attack which mirrored a similar attack in another school district in our area. With the increase in these types of attacks in our area and nationally, we've upgraded our security fabric to include a host of tools with upgraded analytics, monitoring, and protection. Additionally, the district contracted with Blue Orange to conduct a series of testing and vulnerability scans. The information from Blue Orange testing assisted us with improving the security of our network. 2022-23 will see a healthy focus on East Team, digital fluency, and computer science across the district. Full implementation of the New York State Standards for Digital Fluency and Computer Science is set to take place in the fall of 2024, and I will continue to work with our Assistant Superintendent, Supervisor of STEM, Chris Miller, the building principals, and teachers to review the excellent work we are currently doing and future plans. We will also refresh our print management system this summer and add new multifunction printing machines district-wide. This system includes translation software and cloud faxing, and we look forward to greater efficiency and the opportunity to save time and money. This will also be the final summer in a five-year implementation plan of replacing aging smart boards with interactive Sharp TVs. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mrs. Forsberg. And we're just going to review the total costs of everything that we've discussed this evening. The total instruction portion of the budget is estimated to increase as a result of our continued investment in teachers in the classroom environment. Total instruction investments will increase by just over $4.5 million in 2022-23, an approximately 7.4% increase. We've captured the cost of all known retirements, new hires, and replacements in this summary chart. We continue to add new teaching and support positions in the budget to respond to any increases in enrollment or mandated services that may arise as the school year unfolds. Note, the reorganization in the Curriculum Office has a minimal impact on the entire budget. There are direct cost offsets to these costs in two other areas of the budget. At this point, we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding the content of tonight's presentation.
First, I want to thank you all very much. I know this is the big part. So thank you. I appreciate it. Let's start with questions. Mike, did you have a question? Any questions?
I guess one thing that I was thinking about, Ms. Forsberg, was you mentioned hiring an additional technician through Edgitech. What would that position be utilized for?
So we currently have four technicians, and with five schools, as well as Central Office, PPS, Transportation, ONM, and French Hill, so we have other physical buildings. So it would be some... We would have one technician per building, which would be optimal, to have five technicians, one per building. With the additional increase in cybersecurity monitoring, it's another layer to the day-to-day operations. We also have... So we have our Google Administrative Console that changes. It used to be on a monthly basis. Now it feels like it's on a weekly basis. So it's making sure that we're up to date and as safe and secure as possible. And just, we would like to reduce the time... So we have our help desk, and the tickets come in. We would like the technicians to be able to help our teachers and students as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a question for Lisa. Can you talk a little bit more about the reorganization in the Curriculum Office and how those added costs were offset by other areas of the budget and how we handled that? Just a little more detail around that, please. Thank you.
Sure. I'll answer it. And Tom, if I leave anything out, please jump in. So through the end of last school year, we had a Director of Data position in the district. When Mr. Lee resigned to pursue an opportunity in another district, that gave us an opportunity to look at our administrative team and consider the needs that we had moving forward to continue to provide the best opportunity for our students in terms of curriculum instruction. So at that point, we decided to not fill the Director of Data position, and as Ms. Forsberg said, we rolled the data personnel and responsibility into her department. And as she shared earlier, that those two departments had worked so closely together previously, so it was a seamless transition. That gave us an opportunity to see what we needed to do moving forward, and the Supervisor of STEM position was created, and that replaced the Director of Data position. We also had, up until that point, we had a teacher on special assignment for at least five, six years prior to, who was an ELA curriculum coach. We turned that position into a Supervisor of Humanities to encompass ELA and Social Studies, and that gave us an opportunity to have these two supervisor positions on. So we added two, but we removed two positions from the budget as well, and therefore we offset the costs. And that's how we were able to get Mr. Miller as our Supervisor of STEM and Ms. Chesser as our Supervisor of Humanities. Did I leave anything out, Mr. Cole?
That's it. Exactly, in terms of cost. And this is just another example. Superintendent has us look at every position as it becomes available in the school district to see if it is necessary to move forward or to be repurposed in another form, and this is an example of that.
Lisa?
Yeah. My first question is for Lisa. You talked about the new high school electives, data science, and civil engineering and architecture. How are those classes selected to be offered? And can you tell us a little bit more about that whole process? And then how is it financed?
Okay. So when we think about opportunities for our students moving into the future, and we look at the job opportunities that will be available to them, data science really encompasses any area of any business. There's the aspects of data and data analysis that go into it. So we felt that that would be a great opportunity to offer our students. And that kind of came up organically as we talked with building administrators, Dr. Hatter, and myself. In terms of the civil engineering architecture course that we're adding, three years ago, we started with Project Lead the Way with an introduction to engineering course. The year after that, we added a Principles of Engineering course, and we were always planning to create a three-year sequence. We took a break during COVID to not add something new last year. Now, the students who are enrolled as second-year students in that class, they had some say in where we were going with our third-year course. So we've decided to go with civil engineering and architecture as our thirds in a sequence of engineering courses at the high school. Very excited about that. In terms of how it's financed, for next school year, the first year of the courses will be when you have the most expenses, because it's all the professional development for the staff that are teaching it. So we will have, I think that, I'm going to look at Mr. Miller in the audience, it's about $12,000 upfront for the data science and about $8,000 upfront for the civil engineering in year one. In year two, when some of the professional development drops off and it becomes more of maintenance of software and materials and supplies and consumables that are used in those programs, we'll see around a $3,000 a year cost for that. Now, that's not including, both of these courses fall within the math department, and Mr. DiGennaro will monitor while they're scheduling their math teachers for next school year if we're going to need to potentially add some FTE in the mathematics department moving forward.
Thank you. This is for Mike. I know when you came in December, I kind of was poking at you for... You were having difficulty planning for the 22-23 school year, and we understood, based on the information you have now, are you able to have a better projection for what your staffing needs are going to be? I know you have a line item, but are you able to kind of predict what you need, or is it still based upon needs of the students that are unsure?
It's becoming clearer. We know that we need a new special class program for our children with autism. We've run one over the years at Brookside, a class of eight. We're definitely going to need a second class, and we're looking, you know, whether we can move that to Mohansick. We're going to need an additional ICT classroom for third grade at Mohansick. The numbers have grown. We're also looking, over the years, we've combined our second and third grade special class students. The numbers were low, the needs were similar, but the numbers are growing. The needs are not as similar, so we might look to split... We are looking to split second and third grade, so those are some areas of need. And with, as you saw, the increase in the numbers, it includes additional speech and language support, the clinical support. One of the things that come with the number of students is also evaluations. We're looking at how we can have evaluations done every three years with the mechanism that we have in place. Right now, we're sending a lot of evals to BOSEs. This year, we had an additional psychologist help us out. We're looking to continue that position to keep them in-house. Clerical support in our office, it's just keeping up with all the mandates, has become more and more difficult. We will need more teachers. Where do they go and what grade levels? It's still, the rest of it's still a little bit to be determined. We still have students who move in. We haven't had kindergarten screening yet. That is always leads to numbers. We have more and more students who, as you saw the numbers through the Committee on Preschool Special Education, so we're still having those meetings. So the exact... These are the definites that I shared with you, but we will need some additional teachers in different places exactly where, and that's the hard part for me to say, because I've always been able to share that. I'm not sure where the ball's going to fall at that point. We're still examining all the numbers.
Mike? Oh, Anthony, did you have a question? He's good, so.
Thank you. So Tom, as Mr. Rosen just pointed out, we have to craft a budget with a lot of unknown variables, and that means we typically have contingencies in the budget in various locations. In this particular section, I guess we would be talking about contingent faculty positions. Can you explain a little bit about what those are that we've built in and how they're utilized in this budget?
Sure. Well, those contingencies that we place in the budget are in several areas. So we project enrollment for next year internally, based on information that we have, historical trends and so forth. And we placed three positions in the budget this year that were applicable to that. Now, I say three, not because they're going to be used, but because it was a number that would cover us at each one of the elementary schools. We believe the enrollment numbers are solid at this point, but I have one word of caution. Five years ago, we thought they were solid too, and then over the summer, we had almost 70 children move into the district in two months. And then with regard to special education and the needs, Mr. Rosen has a general idea of what he needs as he was talking about at this point, but his needs won't become crystal clear until we get closer to the beginning of the new school year. So we estimate a dollar amount based on average salaries. With every special education teacher comes an assistant, a CTA, so we estimate those as well. At this point, we have $1.455 million in the budget for estimated contingency positions throughout the budget. They may be employed and they may not be.
I just want to speak to that, if I may, in addition to what's already been said, because I understand the line of questions that are coming and the agility, I think, that we're hoping for within the budget to be able to meet the student needs. And ultimately, it's the students' needs that will drive all of the expenditures when it comes to staffing. So the meetings have not concluded at this point for our PPS Department. So depending on the student needs, what services are required, is there a one-to-one situation that's required? Those all drive costs. But also, I want to add, for every elementary section that we add, there are the special area subjects that we have to be mindful of as well. So it's a section of music, it's a section of library, it's three sections of physical education per week, it's a section of art. So those are all a company, the calculus, as we make those determinations. Mr. Cole, Ms. O'Shea, our team, and I, and certainly in conjunction with the Fiscal Advisory Committee, have really looked at historical trends. Five years ago, my first year, it was a bit of an anomaly where we had 70 new students enroll over the summer. That was quite an interesting summer. But we're prepared. We believe we're prepared at this time, based on historical trends and expectations moving forward, to meet the student needs that we anticipate. Now, should we get 60 or 70 more students to move in, we may be revisiting the conversation with each other and with you. But I do believe that there's some agility here to facilitate our meeting of the student needs that we anticipate.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Sure. I have another question for Tom. I know some of the COVID relief funds were used for new devices or technology. How are we able to support that moving forward?
Well, with... Some of the technology we have now built into the budget with regard to... Well, with, some of the technology, we have now built into the budget with regard to Chromebooks and a cyclical replacement of about three grade levels per year. So that's built into this baseline budget. The balance of the monies that were provided by the federal government with regard to the COVID relief funds are being employed in a variety of different ways, and they will continue over the course of the next year and perhaps even into the next year. I can let Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea talk a little bit more about specifics if you want, but it's a separate source of money outside of this budget, but it is currently being employed and will continue to be employed.
Yeah, so there were certain one-time expenses. When you buy PPE, when you buy equipment or instructional materials, yes, those are generally one-time expenses. However, we've invested in personnel to support social emotional needs of our students. So we've invested in clinicians in our schools multi-year. We've invested in summer programs after the school programs, and the federal funding has, we've always offered, we had this conversation today, we've always offered some type of either after-school reading support or summer reading support for students specifically at the elementary level. And the federal funding allowed us to augment the services that we were providing to students previously. I assume we'll return to that baseline level once the federal funding's not available. But while we have it, we're going to service as many students as we're able.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, my question is for Mr. Rosen, and I guess it's a follow-up to your question, Jackie. You talked about the increased needs of our students in terms of the support they need and the 504 plans. Why do you think that that's happening?
There are a number of reasons. One, we talked about just the number of students who continue to move in. We've had 55 most recently, but we had a summer before, I think, when Mr. Cole talked about those 70 students moved in. We had a lot of students that year who also moved in with plans. We're also seeing more and more students at the younger levels coming through the Committee on Preschool Special Education. We've seen over the years, that number at the end of every year is just growing. We will finish this year close to 140 classified preschool students. What we're seeing, when we used to come to the meetings, it was speech and language therapy, occupational therapy. We're seeing more students who are nonverbal, have other needs that require to be classified when they come into kindergarten, as opposed to getting some building-level services or being declassified. So that's two pieces. We're seeing more students with high levels of anxiety. We're seeing more students with mental health needs that are getting in the way of their learning. So they need supports. Some have needed hospitalizations out of district programs. So we're seeing that piece. And you can't rule out, I mean, there was some learning loss with COVID. I mean, there's still, the dust is settling there. We've done a great job supporting students with the after-school programs, with virtual pieces, the summer program. We had transportation this year. So I think we've helped with some of those, but there are still some students who have come through the Committee on Special Education who may have been impacted in some way, may have come anyway. It's hard to know. But you put all that together, and we are at numbers we've never seen before.
Thank you.
Lisa, can, last year, we put the two Supervisors of Curriculum into your office, into your division. Can you talk about their role and how has it been working now?
So our building administrators are instructional leaders. They're strong instructional leaders, and they see the importance of the K-12 vertical alignment of curriculum. These two supervisor positions were brought on to work collaboratively with the building administrators and with me to look at ensuring that vertical alignment, ensuring that our programs are consistent across our buildings, that there are equitable opportunities throughout our buildings. This year, our supervisors have been able to formally evaluate teachers and provide feedback, to look for instructional resources that can help support our learning journey. I can give a couple of examples of how that's looked more practically. So for Mr. Miller, we talked about his involvement in understanding the upcoming required K-12 computer science and digital fluency standards. In addition to that, he's had an opportunity to meet with the middle school science department on a regular basis and to prepare for some upcoming professional development for that department so that they can be ready for the change in standards coming their way with the Science 8 testing in a couple of years. In addition, he's looking to how will he build that into the high school. So those are, how are we kind of bridging the building with the work that we're doing? And then Ms. Chesser, as our Supervisor of Humanities, has worked tirelessly this year to make sure our teachers at the elementary level have what they need to implement a true balanced literacy framework for instruction. And she took on the task of helping all of our teachers better understand the Fuentes and Pennel Benchmark Assessment System. And then that's kind of the K-5 work, some of the K-5 work she's been involved in. However, she's also looking at the secondary level, what writing resources would be beneficial to both the English and the social studies departments as they move forward and have identified some shared needs across that curriculum. So those are the tasks that we're looking for, really building the bridge between the buildings at this point.
So it sounds like it's a tremendous benefit to the students.
I believe so. Yep, most definitely.
Thank you. Anthony? Okay, he's good. Mike?
Ms. Forsberg, I believe it was last year that you spoke about a review of our technology and recommended an upgrade to the phone and security systems. And I'm just wondering, I think some of that work we were able to accomplish last year within the budget, but where are we in that process and what does the timeline look like there?
Sure. So this time last year, we were moving forward, we were discussing it, as you said, I was recommending it. Once it was approved, both projects took on a similar plan. So I met with different vendors, they did walkthroughs, we talked about, did a lot of meetings and presentations from three to five vendors for the security camera system and the phone system. Then it was narrowed down to, they would give us quotes and their scope of work and their implementation plan, and then we selected the vendors. Once we selected the vendors, we were able to place the order, make our own internal plan, internal communications, and plan it out. There were some supply chain issues with the, more of the cam, well, more of the cameras than the phones, because they were happening simultaneously, the projects were. But we were able to cut over to our new phone software system before the hardware came in, which was great, because we had a very, an older phone system that we were worried about. And then once the phones came in, it's a lot of coordinating and planning to not disrupt the instructional day, so a lot after school. And then with the security cameras, those have been up and running longer than the hardware for the phones. And again, that was after school as well, because we didn't want to disrupt the students. So I would say at this point in March of 2022, we're about 95% complete. So there's just a few things left to do, but I would, you know, we're not quite 100. I think we'll always be working on it, but we are, everything's up and running.
That's great.
That's great. Cheryl?
This one's for Jen as well. I have a question a little bit, I have a question about the NICE digital fluency and computer science standards, and they're mentioned a few times throughout the presentation. Can you just share a little bit about where you are in the process and the future plans?
Sure. So Ms. O'Shea spoke to this as well, so I might be repeating a little bit of what she said. But the state has, right now, we're in this awareness and capacity building stage before full implementation in another two years. So I've been working with Ms. O'Shea and Supervisor of STEM, Chris Miller, to talk about what's already taking place, because a lot of wonderful things are taking place and how can we align it. So building that capacity and awareness. So there's been eSteam committee meetings reviewing current projects and what's aligned to the five standards from the state, and talking about what type, what additional projects or lessons or assessments we might need to do K-12, and what coursework in the middle and high school would already accomplish some of this. This summer, we plan to work with Alyssa Arroyo and Amanda Burns, who are instructional tech specialists, and some teachers, and work together to talk about more of a gap analysis. So what do we need to do and then start that planning for next year and also any professional development needs.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah, my question is also from Ms. Forsberg. Keep that on. I'll leave it on. You mentioned that, now, I'm going to show my A chair, because I remember when the smartboards were being installed and how excited we were and how amazing that was. And now you talked about replacing them with something else.
Yes.
What are you replacing it with?
So actually, there's an example right there. So that is an interactive Sharp TV. So the, I came in the summer of 2019, and that was the first summer that they were, the implementation started. So we're hoping to finish that implementation. So smartboards last anywhere from seven to 10 years. As technology grows, the boards needed to be replaced. So the Sharp offers the same interactive technology. There are some teachers who are still using Smart Notebooks, so they're able to continue with the software that came with the smartboards, but with the new types of technology, really anything can work with the boards.
So what can that?
Yes, they are less expensive as well.
And the first thing, first thing that goes on the boards are the touch capability. So there may be a portion of the board where it's no longer responsive to the touch to advance a slide or to write on the board. So when that starts to happen, the boards in the early stages of, the smartboards in the early stages of decline. So that's where the replacement comes about. When you're early adopters, they tend to go, they tend to go before everyone else because we were first to implement the technology. But these boards have more durability than the former smartboards that we were using.
So these would last as long as a TV compared to a smartboard?
And what capability does this device have? Like what can it do? I get it, you can touch it and write on it like a smartboard.
Yeah, you can touch it. It acts like a TV. It's smart as a smart TV would be as well as, you can, the teachers are plugging in their laptops and they can show anything on their laptop and as.
Yeah. And instructionally, if we're in a math classroom and a geometry classroom, we can very easily pull up the graph paper module. So I can turn my screen into graph paper, plot points, plot angles and triangles and so on and so forth. If we're in a geography class, I can plop up a map or an interactive map. We can mark it up together. So there are so many backgrounds and so many other capabilities that are interactive that you can just refresh, you can save the notes that you have, download them, export them, share them as you need, so it's not a lost endeavor with the class. So the, and I'm just scratching the surface of the instructional capabilities that we have specifically, actually at any level, at any level. It's the versatility of the board that I think adds a lot of value.
And the other piece that's nice is it was, it's a smooth transition to go from a smartboard to the Sharp, so there is less training. We're always there. So we have it mapped out. We would take the oldest smartboards and work our way as far as the replacement went. And then we would let the teachers and building principals know in their building when it was coming. And then we could have Amanda or Alyssa work one-on-one with teachers if they wanted any support. And the teachers are really great with sharing what they discover with their colleagues and what the board can do.
Okay, thank you.
So Mike, back to you. And I'm not picking, because I know the largest increase in the curriculum budget is due to the special ed needs, and it's really just quite concerning the needs of the students. And I know you start giving us projections from preschool, and I know you start planning, and so I can imagine how hard this has to be when it's really out of your control, because this was nothing you planned for four years ago. Yeah, you've come to us a lot of years. Is there anything we can do? I mean, it's just so concerning. It's not the money, it's the needs of the students.
You know, this board has always been supportive of whatever we need. We've added people in the middle of the year clinically, teachers. I think that's what we need to be, have on our radar going into the end of this year and into next year. Once the dust settles, when we start in September, it's been a while since I've come back for teaching staff. We might have added a clinical person or something else. This could be the first year that we may need to add people in the middle. Last year, you asked me the question, do you need anything else? Or a similar question. I thought we were good going into the year. We were tight, but the summer kind of threw us off. If the summer goes the same this year, when we get to October, I'm not sure. I think we could need additional teachers because the numbers are flying. We're, it's hard to keep up. The meetings are happening. We're getting seven referrals a week that are coming our way. Not all the students are classified, but just think about every time we have to do an evaluation, the time it takes. And then once a student is classified, there's so many steps that have to be taken and so many procedures that we have to follow. When I talked about the reevaluations, our psychologists chair all of our annual reviews. There's only so many reevaluations they can do. Our speech therapists, their caseloads are growing, so you, it's hard to give up seeing the students to do an evaluation. So we're really trying to be proactive. We try to utilize BOCs to do that. We try to utilize our grant money, and we put money aside for that as well. I think the main thing this board can do is just be, as we've always have been, open to when I come forward and say, we need to look at something. And space, I think that is really the next big thing of, with all the students coming and the programs that we need, and we can say we're going to need two more speech therapists, where are they going to provide speech therapy? Those are the big questions that we need to figure out.
And I guess that was, the second part of my question is, where is, are we already evaluating where in the buildings and how we're going to do it and what needs to be done over the summer in order to make space available? If, I know some of the buildings have space issues to start with, so.
Yes, so I know there've been ongoing questions, meetings with the architect. Mrs. Berry had her meeting with an architect, really looking at the floor plan. And, you know, if it hasn't been updated, things have been added, more E&amp;L staff, more speech staff. So they have to update their floor plan where they thought there might have been an empty room. Now we have something going on in that room. So I know that Mrs. Amerling and Dr. Roberts are going to do the same.
Okay.
And I hope to, once those meetings conclude, I hope that we can come back to the board, present to you what we learned, what we found, and some recommendations moving forward for space, because as Mike said, that is a real consideration for us moving forward.
And the most important, this is not a Yorktown-only, it's the region. All the districts are getting more student, families are moving to Westchester, so we're all seeing the same increase and for all the same reasons that I shared when I answered Lisa's question.
Okay. Mike? Cheryl?
Most of the time.
Lisa?
I'm good, thank you. Thank you guys very, very much. Ron, did you have anything you wanted to add? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the policies. So the board will conduct the first reading and adoption of the following policy. It's 2120 school board elections. Can I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Discussion, Cheryl, do you just want to explain why we updated school board elections?
I think, I believe that in this one, there are some inconsistencies as to the length of residency within the town. I think at one point, it may have been 30 days, at another point, it had mentioned one year, and so we were just trying to make sure that we were abiding by the regulations and making it consistent.
We were making it consistent with school law.
Right.
Okay, all right. Can I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a first read of the following policy? It's actually the Regulation 1420R, it's complaints about curricula or instructional materials. Did anybody have any questions on it? Ron, did you have any explanations you wanted to give?
Yeah, what we noticed going through the process is that there were some differences between the policy and the regulation. Policy will always supersede regulation, so regulations being aligned to, is being modified to better align to policy with obviously some more specificity to the language.
Can I just make a comment? I just want to thank Cheryl as the head of the Policy Committee for jumping on that after, after we talked about it last week, the week before, whenever it was, putting it on the very next agenda and getting it done. Thank you.
All right. Everybody else is good with it? All right, thank you. We have personnel. Personnel agenda, upon recommendation of the Superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, other compensation, extra duty, teaching assistant, change in hours, a leave of absence, and a resignation. And under classified personnel, we have a civil service appointment, we have a police monitors, and a resignation.
So move.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office, a motion to approve the attached resolution to cooperatively bid in the general commodities and service bids issued by Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board comments. Lisa?
Nothing really. I think we talked a lot tonight, so thank you. And Tom?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board comments. Lisa?
Nothing really. I think we talked a lot tonight, so thank you. And Tom, you're coming to the end of your last budget season, so.
He's smiling too much.
I know. You're smiling too much about that. I just want to thank you, really.
Thanks very much.
It's been amazing.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, thank you to Jen and Mike and Lisa and Tom. I know we spent a lot of time going through the budget tonight, so we really appreciate your time. And just another shout out, I hate to repeat what Dr. Hatter said, but we had an amazing performance over the weekend, three performances actually, and each one of them was as good as the one prior. This is the first time in three years that our performing arts has had a live, has had really any performance, but it was live. It was so nice to see everyone here on stage. We could see faces, people were singing, we could hear them very clearly. It was just very, very special weekend, full of three wonderful performances. With that, we had some very dicey weather on Saturday, and I really have to, obviously, I'm a parent of a child in the show, because I have to give a personal thank you to Dennis Forboys and his crew for having this campus looking like it did. And me as a parent and a board trustee, feeling actually safe coming here and feeling that everyone else was going to be safe as well. We were dealing with a lot of parents that night and a lot of our students. So I was completely at ease. Once I got here, I was completely at ease, was very happy. And I can't thank everyone enough for pulling through. It really showed, though, in that show. The smiles on the faces in their performances were outstanding. So thank you to everyone who contributed to those performances, because it really made a lot of students very happy, and a lot of parents as well.
Mike?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. I just also want to say, the last couple of weekends, this campus has been enormously busy. It's so wonderful to see after, you know, the two years we've had of nothing. And again, I just want to say, we have an amazing staff, and our support staff is second to none. And our custodians have worked seven days a week, 12-hour days between the Section 1 tournaments, which were Saturday and Sunday, then they showed up the next day, they worked their entire week. But, oh, there were tournaments going, games going on all week long. They just continually clean. They continually left our facilities in a space that everybody is proud of and everybody in the community, in the area is talking about. And they were back this weekend, not just with the shows, but again with the, with the Section 1 tournament. It's an amazing group of people, and I can't thank them enough for their hard work. So thank you, and a huge shout out to them. Ron, Lisa, Tom? Okay, we have our last public comment. And I didn't read my notes like I usually do. I will read them this time. So, although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. The speakers were asked to sign up on an appropriate sign-up sheet with their full name, address, and email. If your name is not legible enough that we can read it, we cannot call on you. All comments must be addressed to the board directly, not to the audience. Our policy 1230, Public Participation at Board Meetings, clearly states, "We do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak." Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn off your microphone." Thank you for listening. We just have one person signed up, and that is Judith Stevens. And that was not directed at you specifically. It's just my usual spiel.
Thank you. And I do appreciate those rules. They are common sense. And I just want to take a moment to thank the board. And I know Mr. Cole isn't here right now, but his service has been remarkable to our district and Dr. Hatter and the board, there you are. Yeah, just fabulous. The financial management has been really above and beyond, really appreciated. And as a former IT professional, I am really impressed with the discussion of all the different aspects of IT and how it's handled in our district. And most importantly, I am really impressed with how the needs of the students are constantly centered. And it's really, really nice to see. So thank you all for that. I want to thank you, Dr. Hatter, for the update on the CA and E initiative, similar to my concerns about the review of the challenged books. I'm happy to hear you address the importance of communicating the progress on the initiative to district families and the community. I look forward to the update that you mentioned and hope that the date of that presentation will be made known in advance, whether it changes from April 4th or not. And I hope to be here to hear it. One question I have about it is, are there any students or teachers on the CA and E committee or involved with the initiative? I would think that their input would be really invaluable. We have, as you know, we have spectacular teachers and students here. And also, as you know, instances of hate speech over the last couple of years, and we've seen that right here in our community alone, demonstrate the urgent need for cultural competency and increased representation in our schools. This initiative is also critical to properly prepare our students for the business world that they will be entering, where these kind of initiatives are also taking place across the board. I know that you all work to ensure that every child feels safe and comfortable in our school, and I believe the initiative supports that. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of public comments. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much for coming out. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.